My name is Abhijit Joshi. Before we proceed, everyone, please mute themselves. Let me introduce our revered president Renee Yau. Renee?
Thank you. Can you guys see my screen? Yeah, great. Today, we have much to celebrate. It is a new day in America. Young poet Amanda Gorman recited very well today. "When day comes, we step out of the shade, aflame and unafraid. The new dawn blooms as we free it, for there is always light. If only we are brave enough to see it, if only we are brave enough to be it." And today, I'd like to challenge you all to also hear it and say it. But how do you say it is an art? That brings us to our meeting today: Radical Candor. Radical candor by definition is about caring someone or people personally and also challenging directly. And you don't have to be a pushover or come off as condescending and still express what you'd like to say to someone you care about. And with that, today's meeting agenda is actually listed at the bottom of this blog post. And the blog post is how to evaluate speeches effectively. So for those of you who are first time being an evaluator or hope to be an evaluator soon, the blog post consists of important details that hopefully you'll find it informative. And for those of you who are first time joining us, Women Lead Toastmasters, you can find out more detailed information on our webpage in the chat window here. And we provide a safe platform to practice public speaking on every other Wednesdays. We also empower you through our theme-based meetings. And our monthly pop-up workshops will continue to help you hone in on your skill set. For those of you who are on Slack and want to join us in discussions, please feel free to join us through this URL or send me your email privately, and I'm happy to add you. And now, I would like to turn back to Sarah, our Toastmasters for today.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah, and I am the Toastmaster for today's meeting. So like Renee said, today's theme is Radical Candor. And it's about being caring, honest, and direct when giving feedback. And this is something that we practice at Toastmasters. Radical candor is opposed to passive-aggressiveness and just simply openly aggressive feedback. It's also opposed to insincere, nice feedback. It's about saying what needs to be said in a constructive, positive way. So let's practice this today: Radical Candor. And as Renee also said, today is a very special day for America. Today is the inauguration of our new president, and it's also the historic inauguration of our first female VP. And so I'd like to call on Madhu to present the leader profile of the day. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. It is my absolute pleasure to present the leader profile of the day: Kamla Devi Harris. It is a happy coincidence that today's theme is Radical Candor. The two pillars of Radical Candor are to challenge directly and to care personally. Kamla Devi Harris began her career as the Deputy District Attorney of Alameda County in 1990. She went on to become San Francisco District Attorney and California Attorney General before being elected into the US Senate in 2017. Throughout her career as a prosecutor and a member of the Senate Judiciary Committee, Kamla Harris was well-known for her pointed questioning, which left no room for those being questioned to get away with dodging, hedging, or equivocating. She quite literally made her career out of challenging directly. It's important to note that she not just challenged her opponents, but also challenged the norms to become the first Asian or first Black or the first woman in many of her roles. She has also shown that she cares personally about fighting for the little guy. I was particularly touched by the "Back on Track" program she launched as district attorney. It was an innovative program that helped young, first-time, non-violent drug offenders to be reintegrated into society while staying accountable for the crimes committed. To me, there was no clearer display of radical candor than the "that little girl was me" moment from the Democratic primary debate. She challenged Joe Biden directly about the busing program, which she cared about personally. When Joe Biden selected her to be his running mate, many were surprised that he did so in spite of that challenge. I think he did it because of that challenge. Radical candor generates respect and trust between individuals. And that paved the way for Senator Kamla Harris to become Vice President Kamla Harris, who we all celebrate today, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Madhu. I'm really excited for the next four years for the US. So next, I'd like to introduce our meeting roles. And first, our general evaluator today is Anita. Anita, can you please briefly describe your role?
Hello, everyone. As a general evaluator for the meeting today, I will be evaluating how the meeting was performed today, how it was held, was it on time, any feedback for improvement to the meeting? I will also be calling upon the functionaries as part of the meeting to give their report. Back to you, Toastmasters.
Great. And next, our timer today is Kushbu. Kushbu, can you explain what the timer does?
Hello, everyone. My name is Kushbu, and I'm going to time your meetings, time your speeches today. So first speech is by Lakshmi, which is, I think, our second speech, so it would be like five to seven minutes. So Lakshmi, at five minutes, I will be showing you the green light. Just let me pull it up. The green light like this, which is like you are doing great. The second would be the yellow one, which is like, you know, it's time, the sun is setting and it's time to close up. And the last one would be the red, that means that it's time to, you know, I need to down the curtains. So you need to wrap up soon. So this will be like, you know, my light showing for everyone. For Lakshmi, it would be like five to seven minutes. And for Jojo and Shika, I think it would be four to six minutes. For Shika, the timings are not mentioned, so I'm assuming it would be four to six minutes. And for evaluators, which is Megan, Renee, and Karen, it is going to be two to three minutes. So at one and a half minute, I would be showing green light. Two minutes, I would be showing yellow. And at three minutes, I would be showing the red curtains. I think that's it.
Thank you, Kushbu. I love the backgrounds.
Thank you.
And our counter today is Priya. Priya, can you give a brief introduction to your role?
Yeah, so I will be counting the number of hours that everybody has in their speech. It can be the main speech giver, the evaluator, the general evaluator of the table topic. So everybody who speaks, their hours will be counted. Thank you.
Awesome. And then our grammarian today, Shannon, can you give us a description?
Yes. As the grammarian today, I have two roles. The first role is to introduce a word of the day. My word of the day is alacrity. It's a noun, and it means brisk and cheerful readiness. I've been keeping track of words that I wanted to learn for the past couple months. So when I was asked to take on this role, I accepted the invitation with alacrity. I'll be keeping track of your ability to use this word in your speeches. Additionally, I'll be watching everyone or the main presenters for their use or misuse of the language, including incomplete sentences, sentences that change direction midstream, incorrect grammar, or malappropriisms. And I will report at the end. Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. Back to you.
Thanks, Shannon. So next, we'll hear from our three prepared speakers. Our first speaker tonight is Lakshmi, and her evaluator is Megan. Megan, can you please read the objectives for Lakshmi's speech?
Yes, thank you. Lakshmi is giving her second speech on her pathway. With this speech, her purpose is to present the speech to us, receive feedback from me, and then incorporate that feedback into her next speech, which we hope she'll give here so we can watch her improvement. Thank you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Megan. Mahatma Gandhi once said, "Strength does not come from physical capacity. It comes from an indomitable will." Lakshmi truly believes in this quote, and she would like to share her story. Lakshmi, when there is a will, there is definitely a way. When there is a will, there is definitely a way. Lakshmi.
Have you ever felt a pain? That made you think that you are about to die? I have had this horrible experience. One morning, I got up and could not feel the whole of my right arm. There was a shooting pain near my neck. I was just thirty-two and obviously wanted to live. I was in tears when I woke up my husband. He consoled me and immediately took me to the doctor. At that time, I was working as a schoolteacher in India, and I carried home lots of notebooks for grading. The doctor assumed that this was the reason for the pain. He gave me some medicines, but it did not work for me. He then suggested that I go and see an orthopedic surgeon. It was a very stressful time for us. My husband's company was about to transfer him to their Tokyo office. My pain was unbearable, and I could hardly write. I used to hold my right hand with my left and write very slowly. I had to quit my job as I was not able to think or teach properly. The orthopedic surgeon told me that my spinal cord was straight, and there were few nerve bulges between the spinal discs. I was advised complete bedrest for about two months. He wanted me to explain how my typical day was from the very start of the day. I started narrating it to him. I set the alarm for 5:00 AM in the morning and start waking up by 4:00 AM or sometimes even before, just to check if my alarm clock was still working. Stop, he said immediately. I don't want to hear anymore. Why so much stress? The world is not going to end. You can get up half an hour later. He advised me to book a physiotherapy, not be a perfectionist, lead a calmer life, reduce my weight by going on a strict diet, and wear a neck collar. He also told me that after about two months, I should start doing my household work and also prepare for my move to Tokyo. I followed all his instructions with great difficulty. The hardest part for a hoodie like me with a sweet tooth was to keep away from cakes and chocolates. For a few weeks, I did manage to stay away from them. And then, the craving started. And I substituted at least one meal a day with just sugary and fatty sweets. This was not working at all. In fact, I gained more weight. I started chanting the mantra. I can do it. I started doing some gardening, and this actually helped me keep away from sweets, reduce my weight, and relax my mind. I started prioritizing my time by doing just the important tasks on hand and left the remaining for my family members to do. I kept telling myself, it's okay if they don't do it the way I want, as long as it is done. Basically, I started playing mind games to control my brain. I still wore my neck collar on long rides. Even with the collar, I did get a pain. Once during such a ride, I noticed that I was stiffening my body whenever I saw a pothole or a speed bump. This was my body's way of telling me, the road is bumpy, and you're sure to be in pain. I decided to fight this feeling. I encountered the first bump bravely. I did feel the pain. Then the second, third, fourth, so on. And maybe it was around the fortieth or the fiftieth bump that I could finally relax my body. I did not feel any pain this time. Wow. Now I knew that I could control my body with just sheer willpower. Slowly, I started doing other chores, which I was not able to do before, using my newfound power. I still noticed that I was heavily dependent on my collar. So one day, I decided to just throw it in trash. And I'm proud to say that. I have not worn it even once till now. This has taught me that where there's a will, there is definitely a will. And this willpower has made me what I am today. Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Lakshmi. I hope now you can jump out of bed with alacrity.
Nice.
So Abu, thank you for posting the evaluation form in the chat. A timer, could you give us one minute to give Lakshmi our evaluation of her speech or feedback?
Sure.
Try to remember to give Radical Candor or practice Radical Candor and your feedback. Timer, has it been one minute?
It's been more than that. I think we can get started.
Okay. So our second speaker tonight is Jojo, and her evaluator is Renee. Renee, could you please read the objectives for Jojo's speech?
Sure. Jojo is working on her Dynamic Leadership Level One Icebreaker speech. And the speech title is "Father and I." Speech time limit is three to five minutes. And this speech will help us understand a little bit more about who she is as a person.
People say mothers always have special connections to their daughters, but fathers also do. Today, Jojo will share a story about how her father encouraged her to become who she is today. Jojo Jeweler, "Father and I." Father and I, Jojo Jeweler.
Madam Toastmaster, just one thing. If it's icebreaker, is it going to be four to six minutes or three to five minutes, as mentioned by Renee?
Jojo, how long is your speech?
I'd say I prepared like four to six minutes, best on the agenda.
Okay. Four to six minutes will be the timer then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, presidents, guests, and my fellow Toastmasters. Today, I want to share my story about my father. I hope you will like my story. I want to start my story with these questions. Three apples plus four pears equals two? Feel free to type your response in the chat box if you want to. These questions was actually from my second grade. I got poor score, probably thirty-eight out of one hundred. I failed the test because I couldn't provide the answer seven. The answer I wrote was three apples plus four pears. The teacher called my parents and was concerned about my low IQ and my ability of comprehension. My father wasn't so mad or worried about my incompetence. Instead, he asked me why I didn't provide the answer seven. I told my dad, Daddy, I know three plus four is seven. But what I don't understand is how these two different kinds of fruits can be added together to be a seven. With his engineering background, my father immediately got the notion. He was confident that I can, I know how to do the math. But what I don't understand is the logic. Apples and pears are disparates. Growing up in this spiral and conservative society, most parents choose to follow school's guidance or ask their kids to obey teachers' instructions. But my father chose a different path. He called the teacher, and the thing of the school that's, those questions are not qualified to evaluate a kid's performance. Moreover, he even aggressively, progressively, and actively appeared to the Education of the Bureau of Education in Taiwan to stop using those questions to test kids in the future. Fast forward to today, when I look at that instance happening in my second grade, I believe my father epitomized a great parenthood, including listening, understanding, and acceptance, which are coming from love. With my father's unconditional love and supports, I actually made two audacious decisions that have pivoted in my life. I gave up my education in the music school after practicing piano for fifteen years or even winning the national competition. One day, I told my father, I would never be Julia. That's my younger sister, who is becoming an outstanding musician in Taiwan. Because I knew deep down, there is a calling for me. I wanted to pursue it. After graduating from school, from college, with a major in mass communications, I landed a decent job in a media group, become an entertainment reporter. My career seems very promising to me. My career seems very promising to me as I climb the ladder very fast and become a leader within two years. However, there is always a defining moment that urge you to make a decision. I remember one day, I stand in the office in the early morning, prepare my early reports. I looked around the office and asked me myself, is that really a life I wants? No, I don't think so. Definitely not. It is, in the same day, I made a decision. I quit my job. After one year, I came to the state and learned marketing, which later became my career for fifteen years. My father never stopped me from pursuing my dreams. In reality, my father never stopped his four daughters from starting their dreams. Unfortunately, my father passed away when I was on the business trip in Shanghai in 2006. That left me no chance to be his accomplice in his last life journey. He wrote me, he wrote me notes, they became a memo, reminding me how special I am in his eyes. Here is his notes, and I want to share his philosophy with you. He wrote to me, "Life is a ongoing train, and the railway of mine is about to begin. I look at you grow up, pursue your dreams. Now you are the proof of my faith. Please remember you are special. Your identity is not defined by others, it's defined by you. Always be you and always be courageous." Thank you. Back to you, Toastmaster.
Thank you, Jojo. That was really touching, reminding me to appreciate my father. Timer, can we have one minute to do feedback?
Yes.
Thank you. It's time. Thank you, timer. Our third and final speaker is Shika. Her evaluator is Karen. Karen, can you please read the objectives for her speech?
I would love to. Lucky for us, Shika is giving another icebreaker. I love these. So it'll be four to six minutes, and her speech title is "A Roller Coaster Ride." So it'll be four to six minutes. And her speech title is A Roller Coaster Ride. You know, things may be tough in life, but slow and steady wins the race.
Shekha Jane, My Career, A Roller Coaster Ride. My Career, A Roller Coaster Ride. Shekha Jane.
Thank you so much. I started working at fourteen years by helping my dad in his company. He is my biggest mentor. Working with him has taught me that no work is big or small. You need to keep on going like a tortoise from the tortoise and the hare story. He always tells me, it does not matter if you are fast or slow, young or old, late or early. But being steady changes the whole game. I'm among the very few people in our family who moved to the US and took a job. My career has been a roller coaster with sharp curves and steep hills. After getting my first child, I did most of my education. Left a high-paying corporate job, started a startup, then sold my startup and moved to public accounting. I had many high and low times, but never a dull time. I have more than twenty years of experience in accounting and external and internal audit. I started my career in India as an internal auditor responsible for the entire Western region for one of India's biggest manufacturing companies. When I was about to be promoted and move to the next level, we have to move to the US. After coming here, I tried looking for a job, but my India experience and education did not help. Nothing worked. I had to redefine and reprove myself again. I had a chartered accountancy and MBA from India, but I needed to reevaluate and do a CPA here to get started in the US. I cleared the CPA and got an opportunity to work for companies like KPMG, Onestan Young, and Tesla. After a couple of years, I got a chance to start a startup. Now, it was a time to take another turn. I left my high-paying company job and started a few companies of my own. It was a hard decision. Many failed. But I have to keep on going as there was no choice to get down from that ride. And my savings were diminishing. Finally, my last one was a success. Where we were providing consulting services to other companies on SOX and internal audit. It was a time to struggle, to survive, to bootstrap, and to grow. I would always remember my dad's words, to be steady and keep going. Slowly, my company started growing. And we grew to a thirty-five employees company and many happy clients. While everything was settling down, I got two offers. One to sell my company and another to join Deloitte. It was a sharp turn and was a very risky one, but I took a deep breath and held myself on my roller coaster. I sold my company and moved to Deloitte. At Deloitte, I am currently working as a SOX advisor for pre-IPO companies and public companies and guiding them through their SOX and internal control compliance requirements. As an Asian immigrant and a mom, things were never easy to pursue my dreams, grow my career, and raise my kids all at the same time. I had to reinvent and revisit myself every time. There were moments in life where I would skip a breath, spend many, many sleepless nights. There were times where I would think of why I am doing this? Is it worth it? Now, where I am today, it gives me goosebumps and a leap of smile to see what I have done in the past. And it was all worth it, believe me. The journey is still on, but I'm better prepared now for the next turn. However prepared I am, I know the next turn will be a complete surprise. And a new triumphant Shikha will come out of it. I believe my story is not just mine. It is a story of every woman, every mom, and every immigrant who has no option but to keep on going, slow and steady, and to hold tight on this roller coaster life. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shekha. It must be awesome to look back and see that roller coaster behind you. Timer, can we have one minute to give feedback?
Yes. It's time.
Okay, thank you. So next, for today's meeting, we will have table topics. Table topics gives us the opportunity to practice impromptu speaking. And our table topics master will give us the prompts. Our table topics master is Deepa. Please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. This is one of the favorite part of the Toastmaster session for me. It is an opportunity for all the non-speakers of the day and the guests to participate and break any mental barrier that you may have. As we get on with the discussion, I encourage and invite you to please use the word of the day with alacrity in your response. The topic of today is radical candor, which is about giving feedback. But feedback is as much about giving as it is about receiving. And so the first question for the day I have is, how do you like to receive feedback? And to get started, I was wondering if Tasha, would you like to take a chance today? How do you like to receive feedback?
Thank you, Madam Table Topics Master. I think the word of the day is perfect. I would like to receive feedback with alacrity. One thing to note about me is I am from New York. And if you can picture most New Yorkers, we are, can be very direct and very quick. We got places to go. We got people to see. We got things to do. So for a New Yorker like me, giving me feedback, straight to the point. Now, I admit, sometimes I may be hurt or, you know, but I realize that that person is giving me feedback, most likely because they want to see me improve. And I will take that in that vein. They're doing something that is trying to elevate me to the next level. And I appreciate that. That is a gift to me. So I will receive feedback with alacrity. With, I'm sorry, not with, well, with alacrity, but I will receive feedback in that vein. So if you want to tell me something, get to the point. Don't worry about hurting my feelings. I have such a thick skin, but I will take it in the spirit that it was given. And I do appreciate anyone that takes the time to even give me some feedback. And I think it's a great question because that's how I like to communicate, that be direct. Madam Table Topics Master.
Thank you, Tasha. That was wonderful. I agree with you. The more radical, that's the framework of radical candor, to challenge directly with your feedback. Most of the feedback in our daily life that we come across is typically in a work environment. And in a work environment, feedback is typically, again, between the boss and the employee. So the question that comes to my mind is, would you rather be the boss or the employee? Vidya, would you like to take a chance?
Hey, I'm the only Vidya here, right?
You are.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I've been in both shoes. It's always vulnerable to give feedback or take feedback. Because you do want to improve, but there is a part of you that also wants to be accepted. So getting feedback or giving feedback is always the tension between those two. I can't choose particularly because both suck and both have its own rewards. Yeah, I'm unable to pick, but I think it depends on the station in my life. If I feel like I'm in a place where I'm more, I'm feeling more accomplished, where I have the confidence to coach and teach people, if I'm in that space, more of that space. You're always a learner and somebody who can give back. But if I'm more in that space, then yes, maybe being the boss would, I mean, boss is the word I'm loosely using, but with all its baggage. But if you are, if I'm the manager, maybe that would give me, enable me with the opportunity to do the right, give the right kind of feedback and build somebody up. But if I'm more in the space of learning, let's say I'm transitioning a job where I'm more in the space of learning, then yes, I think I would be welcoming a space where I'm not giving feedback, but I'm receiving. But it's always, it's a matter of degrees, I'm saying. I mean, in all places, you give and receive and you teach and you learn. So that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Vidya. So I just wanted to take a pause here. And I'm just calling out the guest names randomly. If any of you would like to participate, please raise your hand in the participant section. And I'm more than, I'm more than happy to call your name out. So the next question I have is, can you think and tell us about a time when you disagreed with the feedback? And how did you go about that? Lara, would you like to?
Sure. Hi. Taking feedback can be challenging. And I think you always have to put yourself in the right frame of mind to be able to receive it in a way that's going to make it most productive. And I can recall a situation with a manager in the past who gave me feedback that I definitely didn't like, and I definitely wanted to challenge it. And what I think was really rooted in my inability to accept that feedback was I was not in a position to be receptive to the feedback. I wasn't welcoming it. And the second part of the feedback that made it hard to receive was it wasn't specific enough and it wasn't actionable. So I think it goes for both the giver and the receiver. You have to be in the right mindset. You have to be willing to take the feedback and open to it. And when you're giving feedback, it's always, I think, a best practice to invite the person to receiving the feedback. Can I give you the feedback? Are you open to me giving feedback right now? Because maybe they're not actually in the right mindset, and maybe now is not the appropriate time to do so. And then when you are also giving feedback, making sure that your feedback is really rooted in specifics and details so that it can be received and be more effective, so that the person is not, you know, reacting to perhaps any negative connotations that come with that feedback or any baggage or anything that there may be misinterpreting. Because if you're vague, then, you know, you can stew and swirl around, what maybe do they mean? And it's not, it's not really rooted in the specifics, the details of what the feedback means. And it's not actionable if you don't actually understand it. So I think about being the recipient and the giver, you both play a really important role in that feedback loop. And just as a recipient, making sure you're in the right mindset. And if you're not telling the person who's giving you feedback, I'm not ready to hear this right now and being honest about that. And if you're giving the feedback, asking first before you give it, are you in a position to receive this? And then thinking about how specific you want to be, and if you're being direct enough and detailed enough around that feedback.
Thank you so much, Lara. That is so true. I completely agree with you about the recipient being in the right frame of mind to accept the feedback. Next question or topic for the day is, if there was a piece of advice you would like to give yourself five years ago, as in what advice would you give to your version of yourself five years ago today? G Mac, would you like to answer the question?
Sure. Glad to.
I hope I pronounced your name correctly. Sorry if I missed.
Yes, you did pronounce it correctly. Just cheese enough. Five years ago, what advice would I give? Just give me a second here.
As you think through it, G Mac, do we have any other volunteers for this question?
Hi, this is Eka.
Yes, go ahead, Eka. Would you like?
Yes, I think I can take this question. And I'm sorry, this is my first time, excuse my NIVTS. But, you know, if I think about like an advice that I would give myself or I wish somebody would give me five years ago, would be to not get complacent as, you know, especially as women, as we try to traverse through our career paths or family life or, you know, just as we progress, I would tell myself to not get complacent and to just stay up with the times, to try and like say, it's okay to do one thing at a time, but still keep progressing in it. And, you know, ask for things that you think you should, you should get or deserve and not wait for something to come to be offered to you, like, you know, for instance, like promotions or if you're not happy with the work situation, to own it up and, you know, to try and take it head on instead of expecting everyone else around you to solve your problems. That's my take on it.
Yes, that's wonderful. Yes, I agree with you. G Mac, would you like to go next?
Sure. If there's one advice I would give myself to the person five years ago, I would say, try to be curious. Especially when you're accepting feedback. You don't have to actually take the feedback and apply it to your life, but just be curious when someone's giving you the feedback. It's hard to actually take feedback from someone, especially when the feedback that they're giving you comes as a surprise or comes from a different perspective. But just being there, listening, and being present, and being curious about the other person. But just being there, listening and being present and being curious about the other person, how they discuss their ideas or what they're coming from. Just listening and asking questions about why they're thinking it that way or where their ideas come from. I think just having that mindset of being curious will actually go for a long way in helping you with deal up, develop that relationship or build, go further in your career. That's the best advice I would give myself if, right now, to the person five years ago.
Thank you so much, G. And I thank all the speakers and all the guests who took the chance with alacrity and spoke with us today. Thank you. Back to you, Adam Toastmaster.
Thank you, Deepa. Moving on, we'll now hear from our evaluators. Our general evaluator, Anita, will lead the evaluation. Anita, please take it away.
Thank you, Sarah. It is a wonderful meeting today. And just for the guests and for the members to know, the general evaluation section is, um, the third part of the meeting where we call on the evaluators to evaluate speakers' speeches. And then I will call upon the functionaries to evaluate, to give the functionary reports. Our first evaluator today is Megan Meyer. She will be evaluating Lakshmi's speech. Megan, take it away, please.
Thank you, Madam General Evaluator. Lakshmi, congratulations on your second speech. You are approaching your educational development with alacrity. We are going to briefly cover what you did well, one thing you could work on and one reach to really stretch yourself as a speaker. First of all, the many things you did well and that from which we could all learn. One was your use of frame and space. I felt very connected to you, the way you were in the space of your Zoom tile. You were just the right distance from the camera, just the right filling of space above you and to the side, that I felt like we were having a casual conversation. Very well done. It let us look at your gestures clearly and just really follow you well. Second thing you did beautifully was a very strong opening. You did this in two ways. First, you had your introduction include a quote and then you, you used a question to engage the room. With the quote, I noticed that the room was already ready with alacrity to hear what you had to say. We were ready to receive. And then with your asking us a question, we were able to jump right in and affirm, yes, you were with you. Here is our answer. You can open speeches with a powerful quote, with a question or with an important statistic. You used two out of three and that was a very effective way to engage us. Third, you also used facial expressions very well and gestures. We felt more of your story because you used these facial expressions and you would slow down when you talked about, uh, the pain in your arm. So we really felt what you were communicating and the surprise look on your face when you talked about the doctor's reaction to you getting up so early in the morning and how stressed you were. These all kept us following you every step of the way. One thing you could work on, uh, you were clearly using your voice well in pitch, in tone, with speed and cadence and pauses. I had trouble with the microphone. It interfered with the power of your voice. Um, and a suggestion for that would be simply to listen to the recording that we took and figure out if maybe just changing the gain on your computer will do it, or if you need a different mic. Um, but for me, that was an interference. And then for your reach, yes, for your reach, I felt that the lighting, um, kind of flattened your presentation. You were so animated and I was, I was very engaged with what you were saying. Um, but if you had brighter lighting shining on your face, your contrast would be greater. It would be easier for me to, to capture those, um, facial expressions. Thank you for a very well-constructed speech. Your content was great. I focused on your delivery. We look forward to your next speech. Thank you very much, Madam General Evaluator.
Thank you, Megan, for a wonderful and specific evaluation and the feedback for Lakshmi on her second speech. Now I would like to call upon Renee Yau to evaluate Jojo's speech. Renee?
Jojo, your dad laid the foundation and instilled the values in you early on to make you become the stellar woman that you are today. Congratulations. Sometimes when I figure out that I don't like to do something, it takes me quite a long time to actually stop doing that because of a lot of peer pressure and judgment around me. And the courage of, that you shared just to be you was very, very inspiring. There are many good parts about your speech. The first thing is about the great breadth of examples that you share with us, um, in, including the music, finding a job and staying in marketing for fifteen years. I've also done marketing as well, so love to connect with you off, uh, offline too. And the impact that your dad has on you, that was such a great icebreaker because I get to know who you are as a person and the values that you deeply connect with. The second thing that you're really good at is actually the natural tone that you have. You have this really brilliant way of naturally telling your story, as if all of us is your best friends and you're just sharing with us that this is who I am and, uh, like it or drop it and very natural. There's no acting in it. And sometimes as we, um, become more and more, you know, rehearsed in our speeches, the naturalness end up losing a bit. So I encourage you to continue to hold on to that spark that you have. And there are two minor suggestions that could potentially make your speech a little bit more effective and you can maybe adopt that in your next speech. The first thing is eye contact. And during your entire speech, you, your eye contact tend to be perhaps somewhere on the screen, looking to connect with the audience. But if you're looking at me right now, your eyes are actually not really focused on anyone. And instead, in the Zoom environment, we encourage our speakers to look right into the camera. And for me, it's actually one centimeter right beneath the camera. For some others, might be one centimeters above. So ha- have a Zoom buddy or practice with your mentor to see how you can best connect with the audience. Remember to speak to it as if it's one-on-one. It's you and the other person. And the second, uh, suggestion is body gesture. I think more preparation, especially in front of a recorded format with your mentor could potentially help you realize that sometimes you have some body movements that's not very intentional. For example, when you get nervous, your body gesture likes to do a little bit of a side wave back and forth. And perhaps that's just how you try to recite or memorize your lines. And more practice will definitely ensure you to not have the unintentional body gestures. In summary, your breadth of, uh, variety of stories and the natural tone was really great and potential improvement, including eye contact and body gesture. The best part about your speech is your message. Your identity is not defined by others. Always be you and always be courageous. Thank you for sharing with us who you are and encourage all of us to be courageous. This year, I will practice radical candor, not just to others, but to myself as well. Thank you, Jojo. Back to Madam General Evaluator.
Thank you, Renee, for the wonderful tips on Zoom setting, because that's something which is very important for us to learn in this virtual environment. Now, I would like to call upon our third evaluator of the day, Karen, to evaluate Chika's icebreaker. Karen?
Thank you so much, Anita. Chika, what a great speech. You had fantastic hand gestures right from the get-go and that just sucked us all right in. We were glued to our screens. Your background, you must tell me where you got it because I must have one, is like a stage. So it's absolutely perfect in that regard. It's because it puts you on stage when it's, that's hard to do here. You had great facial expressions and you gave us fantastic information about your career. What a roller coaster. You promised us that in the title and you delivered every bit of it. You've been up and down and around and over and you took us on the ride with you. You expressed such great emotions when you were talking that you captured us and we went with you through the highs, through the lows, through the, oh no, you have a child and a job and what are you going to do? And, and then the startup, right? You, you get to almost rock bottom and finally something clicks and you're starting to grow. You conveyed all those emotions to us and we were on the ride with you. So that's a fabulous way to do a speech. You also used a lot of descriptive language. It gives me goosebumps. And I smiled and when, of course, you said that, you smiled really big. And that really helps us connect to you. I have a couple of suggestions of some things that you could do to improve your speech. It was already fantastic. One of them is to use more front-back movement because you can really make a point this way. It's also really cool to whisper. So that's a really good way to totally change the tone. And you had an anchor phrase in here. Now, anchor phrase, some of you might not know what that is, is a phrase you'll use three or four times during your speech. And this could even become the title of your speech. To be steady and keep going. It was a quote from your father. And you could use that three to four times in this speech and add that extra meaning into it. And when people laugh, what they would remember is to be steady, keep going. Finally, to challenge you, when you give something with real emotional impact, it's really good to pause. And the pause is not for you. It's for the message to be absorbed by your audience. And it takes a while and we need to have an emotional reaction. And that has a tremendous impact. Absolutely fantastic introduction of yourself to us. I think your LinkedIn is beginning to bring it off the hook. I'm going to be sending you an invite. Fabulous first speech. I can't wait to hear your next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Now we will move on to the functionary reports. A timer, can you please give us the report for the times for the speakers, the evaluators? How did they do on the time today?
So in general, overall, all of our times were in the given time range. Uh, for Lakshmi, it was a little bit over seven minutes, but I think that's okay, just to complete our topic and you know, give the complete feel to the audience as well. Jojo was around five minutes. Chika was also around five minutes. Under the table topics, uh, Sashita Haki, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing the name right. She was around, uh, one minute. Vidya was around two minutes. Laura was little over two, two minutes, but I think it's okay because it's her first meeting. So definitely, you know, it's all new for her. And G Mac was also around one minute. Eka was also around one minute. And regarding the evaluators, Megan, Renee and Karen all took around three minutes to evaluate their, uh, speak, all these speeches. So I think it's, we are all in time.
Okay. Thank you, Kushbu, for the timer report.
You're welcome.
I would now like to move on to our next functionary, Priya Shastri, for giving us the R counter report.
So, uh, today's speeches were delivered with a lot of alacrity and creativity. So thank you to all the speeches and all the evaluators. The R counter, um, today I didn't have much to do. Um, and I myself do a lot of R's. So it was eye-opening for me to, uh, to look at R's. Um, so that was a learning experience for me. Uh, the, starting from Sarah, the Toastmaster, uh, she had two tongue clicks. Uh, Anita had one R, Madhu had one R, Deepa had, uh, uh, three usage of, uh, three times usage of the word alacrity. Tasha had one R, one tongue click, one repeat. Vidya had, uh, six R's, one M, uh, and, uh, she used one word which was not appropriate. Lara had eight M's and one R. Chimak had one R. Eka had six M's and four R's. Kushbu had, had two R's and one you-know. Uh, the speaker one, Lakshmi, had one R. Evaluator for speaker one, Megan, had one M. Speaker two, Jojo, had four R's, one tongue click and one repeat. Evaluate for speaker two, Renee, had one R. Speaker three, Chika, had two R's. Evaluate for Chika, Karen, had one tongue click and no R's. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Priya, for such a thorough report on R counter and all the filler words. Okay. Now our next role is the Kremarian role. Shannon, would you please tell us how we did on the word of the day and the usage of the grammar today?
Yes, we did wonderful on the word of the day. There were, uh, five usages. So good job, Sarah, Deepa, Tashaki, uh, Megan and Priya. And then I also had a few pieces of feedback for the prepared speeches. Uh, so Lakshmi, you said five AM in the morning. To be more precise, you can either say five AM or five in the morning. Jojo, in your speech, you mentioned, uh, three plus four equals two. I would recommend saying either is equal to or equals. You also, um, caught yourself and corrected one time from right to wrote. So you caught that and corrected yourself. Uh, and then, um, Chika, you said, starting at fourteen years, uh, I might say at fourteen years old. Additionally, you mentioned getting your first child. Perhaps you could say having or adopting your first child, whichever is more appropriate there. And I just want to say the speeches were so awesome and it was to kind of listen for those nitpicky things. It's kind of hard, but I really was moved by your speeches and appreciated them.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. So now it's the portion of the meeting where I'll give the general evaluation of the overall meeting today. Timer, can you please give me two to three minutes on the time?
Yes.
Okay, Kushbu. Thank you. Today's meeting started on time and that's very important. S A role is important for starting the meeting on, on time. Our profile of the day speaker, Madhu, she jumped in with alacrity to introduce the women of the day or the profile of the day, which is, uh, which has a made history today. Our vice president, Kamla Devi Harris. What a brilliant idea of picking the right profile of the day to highlight today. And great job there, Madhu, today. It was very relevant. With respect to the timer, I recommend that whoever has a timer role next time, can we take a look at the Toastmasters International and download the Toastmasters timer sheets? That will bring in the consistency to the meetings as we start giving the timings. When we explain the timer role, let's also include the great explanation of the grace time. For example, prepared speeches have a grace period of thirty seconds. The evaluations have a grace period of thirty seconds. The table topics have a grace period of thirty seconds. So it would be good for people to understand that when they have prepared speeches, table topics and evaluations that the grace period or the time is thirty seconds. And table topics were very relevant. They were, uh, with respect to alacrity, the radical candor. Deepa, you really prepared the, uh, the great table topics today. In order for table topics to be more effective next time, whoever is doing the table topics role, I suggest that introduce and let people know the timings in advance with the grace period. And start with some of the club members themselves, so that they can serve as an example for the guests to observe. So if you take a look at our agenda, you So if you take a look at our agenda, you will know the people who have the roles. So do not pick the people with the major roles, but pick on the people with no roles or the minor roles, and then move on to the guests. That way, the meeting will be more effective. We had very good icebreakers today. It looks like we have members here who are very good at storytelling. And I really commend you on that. For people who were doing their first icebreakers or the first speeches, as you were doing the storytelling, they were very well organized, and you did a great job in laying out your journeys and taking the audience along. On evaluations, all the three evaluators had very specific feedback for all the speakers. And that is very important, because as part of Toastmasters journey, it is very important to give a specific feedback for the personal growth of the members, so that they can embark on their professional journey. Thank you, everybody, for the great meeting. Now I want to hand over the control to our Toastmasters, Sarah.
Thank you so much, Anita. So that concludes our meeting for today. I would like to return control to the president to make any announcements she needs to and any club business.
Great. Thank you. Can you guys see my screen? Okay? All right. I'd just like to end on the quote from our 46th President of the United States. Candor generates trust. Trust is the basic on which, is a basis on which real challenge, constructive challenge is made. Thank you all for being here today, and there are a couple of announcements. So we have all of our meetings actually listed on our webpage, and you're more than welcome to click on that and bookmark any meetings that you find interesting. This coming Saturday, there will be a panel interview with world champions of Toastmasters, and feel free to join us at 2:00 PM. And also, our February pop-up workshop has been decided, and it's going to be on February 10, 7 to 8. And it's going to be run by Karen here, that you have already heard her evaluation earlier. And February 24, 7 to 8 PM, it's not our normal, regular Toastmasters meeting, but we will have a contest. So for many of you guys have never participated in a contest, join us because this will be super fun, and we will share more details as many more things planned out. And now I would like to open for guest feedback. Any guests here that would like to come off?
I wanted to say this was a great meeting. It's great to be in this space, and it's just a great event, especially today. I mean, today of all days. So I really appreciate everybody who participated. I know, it's huge. So this is like the icing on the cake.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for joining us. Oh, by the way, our club is officially going to be chartered this week. We have all Nantos Masters that have joined us, so congratulations. And if any of you guys want to be part of our founding team.
I think we just have to have a round of applause for that, okay? We've been waiting for this. What a great club.
Two days to join the founding team. If any of you guys still want to jump on board to be part of this mission, and believe it or not, this club has already touched 48 different countries. So diversity, inclusion, sharing all backgrounds of all women, and of course, men are always welcome too. And it's definitely our mission, and we want to have your voices heard at these underserved topic come to the forefront. And that's a little bit sidetracked, but back to guest feedback. Any other guests would like to share their experience today?
Hey, this is my second meeting, and I'm really applying to formally join. I've always been the guest. I love the structure and the thoughtful feedback. It's just wonderful, really. Thank you so much. And I have a question. I didn't quite understand what Renee meant about the joining the foundership team? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it quite.
Right. There's nothing like, oh, you have to do extra, because this is, you guys are essentially the founding team of helping us charter Womanly Toastmasters, the ones that officially signed up the membership. So honestly, in 100, okay, not hundreds, in 50 years, when our club become like international, like people in Africa, you can be proud of it. I was the first founding team to help make this happen. And there will be many ambassadors globally for us, because this is a mission many of us believe in.
Well, thank you, Renee. Where do I sign up?
Any other guest feedback? G or Amruta, Mandy? Any other guest feedback? No? All right, our guests are a little shy. Okay, and now I would like to, we're ending right on time. I will officially adjourn the meeting. Happy inauguration day. It's a new day for America. Thank you all for joining us on such an exciting historical day today. And many of the officers will stay behind to answer any of your questions for the rest of you all. Enjoy your evening or day wherever you are signing in from today. Thank you, and see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Goodbye.